Hey, never mind.
Was that the last one to show up again?
Yeah.
That figures.
But you showed up. Okay, I think we're ready. Ms. Sylvia, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So it is 6:00 PM and we'll go ahead and get started with our impromptu, not impromptu, but our sudden change of city council meeting from hybrid to virtual and we'll kind of talk about that here in a minute. But it is 6:00 PM, October 27th, 2020, and I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America. One nation, under God. Visible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. And we'll do roll call, Ms. Huffman, please.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All seven members virtually present.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll just kind of move forward. Again, I apologize that we had to kind of go into this all virtual. I want to talk about that real quick here in our board committee time, our council agenda requests, actually. And then we had to do this because of the new rules that came out last Friday. And so we made the decision at the time just to go with this for the time being. We need to make a decision tonight what, how we want to go move forward. The staffs had an opportunity to look things up and check with the county and those types of things. So we'll have that discussion briefly here in a minute. Who is, is it Paul or Lisa?
It's Yolanda tonight.
Would like to go. Oh, Yolanda, okay. Do you want to go over the attendee instructions for those who are in attendance from the public and how they can participate?
Sure. So if you get into the go-to meeting, you will see your control panel on the left and you'll see these four buttons. The top orange arrow is to open up the user interface. And all of your microphones will be muted. There are two ways to communicate with the city council. You raise your hand by clicking on the hand button on your virtual menu bar or you can type a question into the question pane in the attendance interface. So you can see here to raise your hand, you just click on the hand and your hand will be raised when the arrow turns from green to red and a staff member will call on you by name and then will unmute you so you can speak. Okay, and if you have a question you'd like to type in the window pan under question, you can just start typing your question there and then a staff member will read it out loud and direct it to the appropriate party.
Okay, thank you for going over that. And it looks as if so, Ms. Kersher, your hand is up again as usual. So I would just ask that if you have a question, we'll just kind of ignore that. And but if you do have a question, just type it into the bar there and I will make sure to get to that. And as was stated earlier, I will keep my eye on the mute, the hands, as well as the text box to see if anybody has asked a question from public and council as usual. If you need to say something, just unmute yourself and I'll see that green mic on and then you may, we'll go ahead and let you get in on that conversation as that goes. So I kind of have to switch back and forth between screens there, but it's right next to each other and it's not that difficult. So again, and Ms. Duncan says, hello, everyone, sorry to be stuck at home again. And I am sorry too. And and we'll have that discussion here in a minute. So items four A and four B, we have no presentations or commission committee board appointments. So move straight into our city council agenda requests and announcements. And I will go ahead and start with Ms. Duncan if there's anything tonight that you'd like to talk about.
Okay, good evening. I just, I attended the watershed district meeting and Bill talked about the Greenway process. The next meeting, they will have no meeting in November and the next meeting is Friday, December the 4th. They did the watershed meeting and then the enterprise meeting and both meetings together lasted less than an hour. So it wasn't that much information. So I know I don't get the, I have to get them through Greg to get the announcements, but they will meet again on Friday, December the 4th.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Geek, anything tonight?
Nothing from me tonight.
Okay, Mr. Applegate?
Uh, nothing much. Attended regional building and they did a budget meeting, but it wasn't very exciting. They're up to about three billion now. That's quite an operation. But other than that, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Ms. Tamra?
A couple of things. I attended the Fountain Creek watershed monetary mitigation fund meeting last week. Same stuff going on there. They're working on their project list for 2021 and moving forward. So they'll be working on that in the coming weeks. And this week I'm attending the National Trust for Historic Preservation's national conference, the past forward conference, learning about historic preservation on a city level. So and that's all. And there, one last thing, remember the election is next Tuesday. Please get out and get your vote in. That's it.
Okay, and I think, I think they also said that you're kind of really, if it hasn't already passed, like today's, it'll kind of the drop dead date to get your things postmarked. So luckily for us in the county, there are a million of those drop boxes and they're constantly picking them up. I dropped mine off last week and then I checked like a day later and they had already received it at the county office. So they are constantly going through and emptying those boxes is almost as quickly as people are putting stuff in. So that's a lucky thing for us. You don't have to pay any postage. You just take it down there. I know in the city of Fountain, we have one at the police department and then at Bear Creek Nature Park right off of Duckwood. So if you go over there, you can, there's one sitting right there in the parking lot, you can drop it off. And and they just keep adding more and more over the last couple of years. So if you have that opportunity, please do that quickly as we're getting close to that day. And so we'll move on with that. Thanks, Ms. Estes. Mayor Protem, anything?
I've got nothing tonight, thanks.
Okay, thank you. And then Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, I attended a couple of really long meetings. I wasn't lucky like Dietrich and mine were less than an hour. Mine were more like all of them to two and a half hours. At PPACG, we had a very long presentation from the Front Range train system they're trying to put in. If you want the slides, I did forward them to Scott. A lot of interesting information. Estimated 3 million people moving to this area by 2050 and 84% of that population is expected to land on the Front Range. So and a lot of it in Colorado Springs and Pueblo. So I think it's really good. We need to be at the table of any as many discussions as we can for a lot of stuff going on because whether we want the growth in our city or not, the growth, as we talked about last week, is going to happen around us and we need to be part of these discussions going on. One of my concerns, I keep expressing whenever the Front Range transit system is brought up, is they are estimating if it got going the way they, you know, envision it, it would be 14 round trip trains a day from like Pueblo to Fort Collins area. And I keep asking at every meeting, are you discussing it with the cities and towns these trains are going to go through and adding an additional 28 trains to their cities per day potentially? And they don't have underpasses and overpasses. Have you thought about the amount of ozone and traffic congestion you're going to be creating in those cities? So if you enter those conversations and different meetings, please continue to press that point because no, my question is being ignored at every meeting that I bring it up to. No one's even addressing it. So we all know how much we wait for trains already. So that's a conversation we really need to be in. Adding that many trains per day could add a lot more congestion around town. So the slides are available from Scott if you're interested in them. They're also, we also did a long range transportation strategic plan meeting and those slides are available too and they're way too complicated to go through. But again, discussions we need to be at the table with in terms of different things that are going on transportation wise. This is long range planning. So probably won't happen, you know, while we're here, but we need to be making our needs known now. And again, those slides are available from Scott. A couple, few other meetings, but you know, we're really busy here tonight. But one question I did have a citizen and I don't, I think John Trilch is on the line, maybe Scott can answer it, is I had a citizen ask me, how many average people do we have watching our meetings every week, whether we're online or in council chambers? How many people are attending that? And while they're thinking of that answer, I want to kind of reiterate everything on voting. There seems to be a lot of stuff going around that people are saying they don't trust the mail-in ballot system. And we need to remember, we have kind of the gold standard for the nation in terms of mail-in ballots. And Mayor was right, we do need to drop them in the dropbox from now on. However, please don't wait to vote in person. You could be potentially setting yourself up for some very long wait times. Bring your ballot in, drop it off if you, that's what you're comfortable with at the voting place. But there's no difference between marking your ballot at home and marking your ballot at the box. It's going to be counted just the same. And Colorado is no longer set up to really have thousands of people show up at the polls on voting days. The message from Chuck Borman this morning at the county commissioners meeting was if you're going to vote in person on the voting day, bring a chair and a good book because you're probably going to be there for a while. So you know, mark that ballot at home. The only reason to really go in in person is if you need to make a change or you made a mistake on it. Another thing people don't realize is you don't have to answer every question. If you don't know an answer to something, it's okay to leave it blank and just vote for what you know or look around online and find that information. But just get that ballot turned in.
Yeah, and that's a really good point about not filling it out. When I first started voting, I thought I had to fill them all out and someone, someone said, do the ones you want to. And if you don't want to vote for a judge, you have nothing or know, no idea about them, don't vote on it. Or if there's one issue that you just, you're kind of either way, then then don't vote on that one, but do something. And good point about also, I want to reiterate what she said about, don't wait to election day because this notion that it's all backwards and and it's again, these whole, these thoughts of nefarious things and nefarious acts going on in the background. And and that's the funniest thing about politics is there's always this room of people that are coming up with all these bad things that are going to happen. And they really don't ever happen. So what will happen, that's going to be bad, you'll be standing in line for a very long day if you decide you're going to do it in person. So just be ready for that, as Sharon says. So thanks for that. The only thing I have tonight is I just want to, and Scott may have to chime in to help me out with some of the information because we got it kind of fast and furious. The governor re-put out some different restrictions around COVID and because our numbers in the state, the county are going up. And I think we're getting kind of a week here in El Paso County to show that we're making a concerted effort to get our numbers to either level out or start going back down again. And so with the news orders that came out last week from the governor, they're limiting back to 10 people again, as well as you can't have more than two people from two different households together. There's a lot of complexities in that and a lot of probably gray area. And so we made the decision tonight, let's just go virtual tonight, kind of get our bearings straight, figure out what's going on and then move from there. So according to Scott, basically what they're saying, what we can also do, we can still do kind of in person with council, but we will still have to be virtual. And Scott, am I, am I kind of speaking to that properly?
So we verified with the, with the county after reading, going through the public health order, that it's really up to the council how they want to handle the actual council meeting as far as a council member individual. So you want to do it virtual, if you want to do it live, hybrid, whatever, it's up to the council. And what we weren't sure is were we, were we going to be held to the 10 with regard to the public attending? And the county indicated that they would, their preference is that we went virtual with the public, but the guideline does not require that. So it really is going to be up to the council to decide which direction they want to go. Also, before I forget, Sharon had asked specifically if I knew who, or if we knew yet, how many people watch these live. We don't, John's going to try to get the information from YouTube on how many people plug in and watch our YouTube, the recordings of the council meetings, but we don't, at our fingertips, don't have the information on who watches it live. So we're going to see if we can try to find out how we get that information, maybe with our IT folks. And we'll try to get that back to the council if we have that. But I just wanted to share that with you.
Okay, thank you on that. And I could tell you, because I'm the one kind of going back and forth between attendees and staff, generally from public, we've never had more than six, seven or eight. And and that's from public. And it's usually, we kind of have regulars that attend those meetings online who are also the same ones that attend in person as well. So we don't have a lot that are watching live, like right now. I could tell you tonight, we have one, two, three, four, possibly six or seven. Sometimes there are, that are on for an agenda item that, that gets their agenda item and then they jump right off. And I don't know about a couple of the people here. So generally, that's where we're at. And we've never had more than eight or nine from public virtually live. So and so I want to leave this to council as well. I, you know, I could have said, okay, let's just do all virtual, let's do hybrid. I don't really care one way or the other. Certainly, there are some nights, it's a lot easier just to be at home and like I am tonight and just hold our meeting. I don't think we have a lot other than our electric rate thing. However, some people prefer being in at city council and doing it that way, which I'm, I've got no strong opinion either way. So if anybody on council has a strong opinion, do we stay all virtual? Do we want to do a hybrid? And then how do we allow public to partake? Again, when we're talking about those numbers of, of actual participation, of the eight that have showed up in our maximum nights with, with folks, maybe one or two will make a comment about something. And so it's been very, 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 very light as far as that goes. So I'm just keeping that in mind as we move forward. When we've had public in the council chambers, again, as you guys know, it's been two, three, four, five people and sometimes they're there for one item and then they leave as soon as it's over. So I kind of want to ask council, and I'll just go by if your light or your mic pops on, if anybody has a strong desire one way or the other. Keep in mind, we do have the second part of our budget discussion next week on Monday. And that could pose a problem trying to do that virtually, just because of discussion that needs to happen and no such a thing. So and we know with a lot of our workshops or work sessions, public just usually doesn't show up. And we may have one or two citizens that come in and take an active participation, which is great. But it's just something that the city has, you know, the citizens, they do what they need to do. And so if anybody on council, Mr. Applegate, your mic's on?
Yeah, I rather prefer for the council to be there in person and be together so they can watch the whole thing as it kind of goes on. As far as the public, it doesn't really matter if they're virtual or if they're in-house, as long as we're available to them. I think that works out just fine. But I guess it's better if we're all there and they get the, the view of everything that's going on. That's all.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I agree with that, too. And the count, and the public being there. I think we, that's where, I think there's still some gray area and they're working on that as well as how much public can be there. Apparently, we are, not apparently, we are considered an important city function. And so we can kind of not skirt the rules, but they, they make them work for what we need to do. Ms. Thompson, your mic's on?
I, I also prefer in person, but I completely understand the necessity in some cases for hybrid, whatever people are, you know, comfortable with as council members. I think you miss kind of some of the nuances of seeing people's faces and just picking up on little hints and things. And I think that's, that's important. And, you know, I encourage citizens to reach out to us beyond council meetings. Maybe that's, they need to, rather than stopping by to talk with us. I met with a couple of citizens this week, had some great conversations, brought some questions back to council and was able to get, you know, some answers. So maybe stretching a little bit further, reaching out to us between meetings and before meetings, I would really, really encourage that. But I really prefer in person.
Okay. Let me go back to the council portion. Anybody else from council? Okay, I'm not seeing, oh, Ms. Estes, go ahead.
Um, I like being there in person, but I'm also taking care of elderly parents who are absolutely paranoid that they're going to catch this. And so I prefer that we have a hybrid approach on this as necessary. And I think that we're going to have some changes coming down later from the county anyway. Oh, like, like I said, I like being there, but I also have family that I have to take into consideration.
Right. Okay. And I think with the hybrid, it really lends itself to being able to do both. And I know you've taken the opportunity to be both in and, and at home when needed. I don't know if this is easy for me since I'm running the meeting to, and I've considered that, you know, can I just stay home? And what would that look like, since I'm the one kind of running the meeting? So I don't know that I get the choice myself unless we're, we're all in on one way or the other. But that's, that's okay for me. So I'm not seeing any strong opinions from council otherwise than that. Sharon, did you have anything further?
Someone's texting me saying they're trying to get into the meeting. I don't know who lets people in. A citizen? You don't let, who lets them in?
I don't know that anybody lets them in. They get a code. They should have registered for the meeting prior. I think that's how it goes. I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
Correct.
If Lisa's on.
They should have registered and they get a code and they can, I click on a link to register. Sharon, is there any way that you can email me their contact information? I'll call them?
Uh, sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So with that, I think Scott, let's plan on doing the hybrid version. We'll do hybrid. And then what we need to figure out is just that public piece and, and how many people can be in from the public? Because I, I think there's still some, some question around that. And then because with the governor's order, it was no more than two people or two people from two different households. And so if you have a third person from another household, then that kind of negates that whole thing. And so let's figure that out. And we'll continue with the hybrid version. So council members, if you feel like I need to stay home, like in Ms. Estes's circumstance where she knows she's going to be with her parents for a little bit longer, she just needs to stay home, then we'll do it that way. You guys have that option. And we'll, we're going to continue to use this go-to webinar until, one, we find something better or we just don't need it anymore. But I think even past COVID, this is kind of a good opportunity to allow public to be a part of it. And that was one of the biggest complaints I've heard the entire time I've been on council is I would love to be a part of council, it's just at the wrong time of day, which I get. And so, you know, this may be just kind of the new part of what it is. It's, it's somewhat difficult for staff because we, there's a lot to manage and to ensure that the meetings run smoothly. But we will continue to move forward with the virtual right now and then go from there. And then Mr. Rick says, with regards to boards and commissions, do we need to let the board decide which approach they should use for the meetings? Or you want to decide for the boards and commissions as well? I think we'll have to follow this across the board. And I don't know how, you know, planning or parks have been doing that, but what I think whatever council chooses, I think everyone should just kind of follow suit, just to make it uniform for everybody. So let's kind of just look at it that way and go from there. Ms. Cologne, your question bar came up. Did you have a question in regards to this? Or was that just an accident? Let me see if. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and take that as a, oh, go ahead.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sending my question in, but I will read it to you. Why would the city council here in Fountain even consider raising our fountain electric utility rates? I, my husband and I purchased a home in Cumberland Green. We've been here
Okay.
2006. Mm-hmm.
So we're going to get to that discussion or you can ask that during public comment, which is coming up. But since that is part of our discussion tonight, you can, if you want to wait until then and then bring that up, then I'll be sure to call on you just to keep the meeting moving on, on the rest of the issue. So we'll definitely let you, let you get back on. Okay, yeah, no problem.
I have, I have a quick question also. The brochure that we got in the, the meeting was starting at 6:00, but when I logged on, it said that you started at 5:30.
They started, they just get everything ready. We didn't start our meeting until 6:00. And so there's kind of just a million around it and all that stuff, but nothing happened tonight at 5:30. And we don't start recording until 6:00 anyway. So we have to, we have to apply to the 6 o'clock. Nope.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right. So with that, Scott, I hope that gives you guys enough direction as far as where we go with our meetings from here. And then we will kind of just play it by ear. I agree with Ms. Estes. I don't know where the county is going to go. Sound like they may, they could change things. I heard in Denver today, they, they went back a level. They're blaming everybody else and supposedly they're following all the rules. But now that they're being forced to go back because someone else is something, it's just kind of the typical politics that are going on right now. But whatever. So we'll move on. We do have public to be heard. Item number six, citizens may address to council items that are not on our current agenda. Please sign up with the city clerk prior to the meeting. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but would direct staff to follow up. And out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. Ms. Huffman, I think on the wording for this, we may want to change that since we are moving to more of a hybrid model, at least for the time being. And, and who knows moving forward, that we should allow for people to email some questions in as well. And I know it's not specifically say to hear, but maybe kind of maybe throwing that in there. So people who do know or just want to put that question out there and, and don't necessarily want to speak, they have that opportunity.
Understood. I'll make that correct.
Okay, thank you. And then I am, my screen is frozen here. Sorry, guys. Okay, I'm just checking on questions. Okay, I have nothing from public. Ms. Huffman, did we receive anything prior to the meeting?
We did not, sir. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to do a quick check to make sure that no one on line is, has a question. Okay, going, going, gone. We will keep moving into item number seven, our consent agenda. All items listed under consent are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests or a citizen so requests, in which case item may be removed from the agenda and moved and considered separately at the discretion of the council. We do have items A, B, C, and D. Counsel? Ms. Duncan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. And Mr. Geek?
I'll second that.
Okay. And did anybody else have anything else? I still see lights on.
Yes. On item D, I'm not asking to remove it from the consent agenda. However, I do own property on Charter Oak Ranch Road. And I'd like the public to know it's complete into the opposite road of where I own property. So there would be no financial benefit to me whatsoever for this item to go through. If everybody's comfortable based on that with me voting on it, then, then I will vote on it.
Okay. And I see no issues personally. I don't see any red flags going up with anybody else. And I think we should be good there. Mr. Lauer, did you have anything?
I was just going to say, I agree with him. I'm good with, with Sharon voting on this.
Okay. All right. Okay. So I'll just take everybody's silence as we're good with that. So we have a motion and do we, do we get a second? I'm sorry.
Yes, I seconded it.
Yes, I seconded it.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for approval. We'll have Ms. Huffman do the call.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll keep moving forward. We have item eight, old business, which we have none tonight. We'll move straight into item number nine, new business. Uh, nothing was removed from consent agenda, so we'll do item nine B. First reading of ordinance number one, seven, five, zero. An ordinance to amend the Fountain Municipal Code, section two, five, zero of chapter one, two point zero four of title twelve, construction generally to amend the minimum street grade and intersection grades from zero point five percent to one point zero percent. Um, is Ms. Williams on, who's gonna be taking this one tonight?
I am on. Can you all hear me?
Okay, yep.
Beautiful. Uh, good morning, Mayor and members of council. Um, I'm bringing this item before you to improve the longevity of our roads throughout the city of Fountain. For those of you who watch these um new developments go up, one of the biggest problems that we have in Fountain is is it's either flat or it's at eight percent. You're either up on the mesa and you couldn't get a marble to roll if you tried. Or you're coming down the hill on Duckwood and we're trying to keep everybody to slow down. So there's not really a happy medium in this city as far as um, when it comes to grading out these subdivisions. And one of the problems is it's very difficult for contractors to build a road at a half a percent. So what generally ends up happening is you have a high spot and a low spot and a high spot and a low spot. And because you have those low spots, the roads don't drain. And then where the road holds water, it freezes and thaws and starts to break down the curb and gutter in the asphalt. So this is an attempt to um increase the design slope for the roads and in turn increase the longevity of the streets throughout the city. Um, as we all know, our streets budget isn't increasing as much as we would like it to, and we already know we're essentially behind the curve. So I see this as a way to do what we can proactively to in, to decrease the amount of money we need for road maintenance in the future. Does anybody have any questions?
I am muted. Okay, questions from council? Uh, Mr. or Mayor Proton, go ahead.
Yeah, Brandy, did you, um, can you take a minute and describe how you got to the one percent? Figure, is that kind of a compromise or is it essentially an engineering standard or?
Um, good old fashioned interviewing. I've talked to uh the contractors, the individuals who have to build the roads. One of the disconnects, um, I do have the luxury of being an engineer and having design plans. And uh, as you probably know, uh, councilmember Lauer, you can make anything work on paper. It's getting it to work in the field. That's the hard part. So um, as I've gone through my last four years and dealt with several different construction companies, I asked them and solicited their advice. What is the minimum road slope that you guys can comfortably build and feel that you can actually hit? And generally that's one percent. And I've asked both those who do asphalt and those who do concrete. Because really you've got to set the concrete at the right elevation and then the asphalt follows. And every time I try to get a contractor to um, to do concrete in a retrofit situation, it's virtually impossible to get it to drain if it's less than one percent. So they'll do their best and, and they will put it in there and they will trowel it and they will brush it, but you get one tiny pebble in there and you don't have one percent anymore. Or sorry, you don't have half percent anymore. You, you've lost it.
Would they be better off? Would they be better off even going like a, would they be better off even going like a one point five or is everybody
Yeah, well I
good with one?
Yeah, I would say that's where the compromise comes in. Is that the higher you go, the harder it is to grade a site. So at least at one percent, I feel comfortable that the contractor can at least try to hit it. And if they're off, they get a half percent, but the road still drains. If you're at a half percent and you're off, you're at zero or it's going backwards and you, you don't get any drainage out of that. So there's, there's a little bit of a tolerance built into a one percent.
Okay.
There would be more tolerance, obviously, at one and a half. It just, to me, it didn't seem like too big of a leap that the industry would feel comfortable with it, but yet something that I could get behind um to really try to increase the longevity of our roads in the city. And it's really, it's just drainage and it's the reality of construction. It's not happening in a clean room. It's happening in a field and it's not exactly as scientific as I'd like it to be.
No, that's great. I appreciate the information.
Okay, Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, also for information purposes, I, I used to be a concrete contractor. And we always went with two percent on flat work, which is only a, in reality, a quarter of an inch to the foot. So one would be an eighth of an inch to the foot. That means if you're going sixteen feet, you're only grading down two inches. So even that seems like a pretty minimal amount to me to try to get an asphalt road that, that fine. But at least that's better than a half a percent.
You are absolutely correct, councilmember Applegate. So I, I appreciate your um endorsement of this change. And yes, you're right, again, a perfect world, two percent would be fantastic. It's just if we can get one percent and make progress and get the roads to, to drain, then we'll go that route. And, and if not, then we'll address that in the future.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council on this item? Uh, Ms. Thompson?
Brandy, I think you might have answered the question and um, this is all not just on new builds. This is any roads that we're repairing or retrofitting, right?
It'll probably be just for new builds. Um, it's in the design portion. So it'll be for designs that are coming in, new roads that are being built. Usually if it's a reconstruction, there's, there's already been a design done. You're not going to redesign the road. You're gonna simply remove and replace the infrastructure that's already there. So this is for the, the, yeah, this is for the design standards for new construction.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, lively discussion on road grade. Uh, who would have thought? Um, but it's twenty twenty, why not? Any other questions? I'm not seeing any. Okay, uh, what would council like to do with this item? Mr. Um, Lauer?
Yeah, I move to approve ordinance one, seven, five, zero on first reading.
And Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Uh, uh, first reading of ordinance number one side, one, seven, five, zero. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right. Let's move on to item number nine, C. Resolution number two, zero dash zero, eight, four. A resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year FY twenty twenty budget, uh, budgeted funds. Mr. Lewis.
Good evening, council. This is John Lewis, City of Fountain Finance Director. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Could you go to the next slide, please?
I'm sorry, um.
There we go.
This one, okay.
Thank you. Um, as you all know, we had a supplemental that you uh approved on September twenty second. Since then, um, city personnel have been made aware of additional expenditures and um some uses for the CARES Act revenue that we received as well as additional revenue in sales tax and um police department gun auction sales and some capital lease uh revenue. So uh with that, we would like to uh take some of the money that was held back in the first carry, in the first supplemental and the carry forward back in April due to COVID, because we didn't know how that was gonna go. We held some of that money back and so we'd like now to uh have it approved because it was not included in the, in the carry forward. So let's look at some of those items on the next slide, please. We can see that uh we've had additional revenue uh over and above budget, including the CARES Act funding uh of two million eight forty-six in the uh general fund. Uh, and the holdbacks from the initial carry forward are on this first page. A hundred and twenty-seven thousand for fire station access, control and surveillance. Uh, planning uh software uh for um seventy-three thousand. Ambulance dash mount cameras of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and a herbicide sprayer that needs to be replaced now that we have a new uh truck over in uh parks. And that's for fifty thousand. That next slide, please. The additional items that have come up uh include uh some money for old Pueblo Road. Actually, we received this money from Challenger Homes last year. Uh, and a police department trailer that was damaged by hail in twenty eighteen. Gas mask for the police department, some carpet replacement uh for, in, in the police department. And then thirty-two thousand for minor equipment, including drone replacement, ballistic shield, first aid kit, surveillance cameras, et cetera. Uh, you have approved the Chief Maxson moving ahead with getting us a new pumper truck as well as a new ladder truck. So we've included both of those items um that you've approved him uh ordering. And um then, last but not least, we have the um remaining lease for the storage of public safety vehicles for the remainder of twenty twenty and some county health building improvements that we've agreed to help with the sixty-five thousand. So the total expenditures are two million three forty-two, two fifty. Uh, we will take one million dollars from the balance of the remaining public safety capital improvement reserve and then get a lease, uh as we mentioned up above, um for the remainder of that ladder truck. And uh that public safety capital improvement reserve will help pay that off. So um the balance will, that, that actually goes into the assigned fund balance in the general fund. It actually increases the general fund by one million five hundred and three thousand seven hundred and fifty. So with all that, I would like to ask council to approve the appropriation of the two million three forty-two, two fifty. Are there any questions?
All right, I'm gonna look to council first to see if you have any questions um on this issue. Ms. Thompson?
Can you explain the storage of the public safety vehicles for ninety-one hundred dollars, please?
The um public safety vehicles, we, we've had to have stored and uh we've had to pay the um, the lease for that and it, it goes into um the, the remainder of the year.
Well, I understand that. Why are we storing them in um paying for it?
Okay, um, I'm not sure. I'm gonna ask uh our city manager uh or, or if he could help with that explanation.
Scott, would you like me to take that or would you want to take that? No, you got it. Okay, Sharon, um, if you recall, um, we originally had planned facilities wise, we needed to get uh in order to, the dominoes falling from getting the um ambulance up to fire station two on the east side. We had the need to store both some uh fire department equipment. And then we also purchased and have the command post vehicle that's outside and a couple of other police vehicles. So originally we were going to build an exterior building down at station three, if you recall. Um, but when we got those numbers back, those numbers were prohibitive um on building uh uh storage facility down there. So right now, until we get something truly on the east side of the city, fire station wise and PD wise that we can move into, this is kind of a stopgap so we can get those vehicles inside both from a hail damage perspective as well as just a daily wear and tear of having them outside. Um, so this is the um solution for that.
Did you notice by the insurance company that those vehicles were now being garaged and see? I know I get a discount on my car since it stays in the garage and not out on the street.
I had not thought of that, but we'll check into it.
Okay, um, and, and so it says for the remainder of the year, what is the timeframe you're paying that amount of money for?
Um, until we get a long-term solution where we can get them um in something permanent.
Right, okay. I just, I guess I, I own in a storage facility. I just, um, I'm trying to figure out the timeframe of it and the monthly cost and everything that you're paying. And so um, making sure we're getting a good deal.
Sure. No, we hope it's, we hope it's sooner rather than later on the east side, but we just don't know. And it, and fiscally, when it came back with the numbers uh to build a, a separate building at station three, it was big dollars.
Okay, I'll talk to you about some of that some more. Okay, thank you. Bye.
You bet. Okay, any other questions? I'm gonna go to um public. Uh, I do have one question um uh from Ms. Foster. Why do we need another ladder truck? I'm gonna try to answer as best I can. I don't see Chief on. Um, we've had this discussion in the last couple of meetings. Uh, I think we did talk about it the last meeting. About, I'm just checking to see if he's on. I don't see him. Uh, so really the, the all intensive purposes of a new ladder truck, the one that we currently have is dying a slow death. If it's not already dead, we have been waiting on parts um that can only be replaced by someone who lives in Ger- or someone from Germany. Um, and we've been waiting for um, I would say upwards, four or five months to get that person out just to fix the part that we need. Um, so we've, in essence, have it, have had an inoperable uh ladder truck for about four months. And so uh Chief Maxson has uh been working with um staff to, his staff to figure out what's the best way to replace this. And, and something that's not gonna um, you know, create more issues for us in the end. So um, we're actually getting a ladder truck that fits more within the community and, and what we need it for. Um, the last ladder truck was um, you know, there were some pieces and parts there that probably we didn't need as, as as it was presented. And I'm, I'm not saying that is a bad thing or anything. It's just, you know, it was, it was a good deal at the time. Uh, but again, it's, it's, it's how many years old and it's just been, it's been failing in a lot of areas. So uh, we do need a replacement and this is just along those, those lines. And I hope that uh answers your question, Ms. Foster. Uh, I was trying to type that all in, but I thought it's just easier to go ahead and just answer it that way. So um, if you'd like to ask any further questions, you can. You just need to unmute yourself on that one. And Scott, if I missed anything on that, if you um want to jump in and, and fix whatever I didn't say or fix what I did say.
No, you nailed it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, and we do have money that we've had set aside for, that's set aside for this specifically, but some monies that that they were able to figure out how to make it work and it's not gonna affect anything else um on that. So okay, um. I think that's it. I'm not seeing other of the questions right there. Uh, so with no other questions, how would council like to move forward on this? I think this is hopefully the last one for the year. We will see. Uh, Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, I move to approve resolution twenty dash zero, eight, four. No, wait a minute.
Yeah, that's it. That's it.
That's right. You're right.
Okay, I know what happened last time.
And Mr. That's all right. And Mr. Geek?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. If no further discussion, um, Ms. Huffman, go ahead and do the call.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Thank you, Apple.
Thank you. I was on mute again. I turned that down and I forget to turn it back on. Okay. With that, we will move into our final agenda item for tonight. I'm open in a public hearing. Resolution number two zero dash zero eight five, a resolution approving adjustments in base electric rates for all classes of customers, both inside and outside the city to become effective January one twenty twenty-one and January one twenty twenty-two. Mr. Blake and Ship, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council and members of the public who are with us this evening. Earlier this this spring, utility staff requested a proposal from the city's electric rate consultant to perform a a cost of service and rate design study. This most recent study was the most recent study prior to this was completed in September of twenty eighteen and and that resulted in a three percent increase effective January first of twenty nineteen. So as of the first of the year, it will have been two years since there was any increase in our electric rates. Reviewing the the cost of service and rates on a regular basis ensures that the city's utility rates are appropriately recovering the costs of providing service to and meeting the needs of our various customer groups. As the council knows, the electric utility is owned and operated by the city and it is a cost of service utility. What that means is that we essentially set our rates just to recover our costs. There there is no profit such as a investor home utility might might have. The the primary factor driving the current rate study is the need to make system improvements. And the and the most important system improvement at this time is a second interconnection point to the Colorado Springs utility transmission system and the associated transmission extension that's associated with that. Currently, our system is fed from the west and we have a what is for all practical purposes, a a single transmission feed. So if we have a failure of that transmission feed, we have basically a complete failure to our electric distribution system. And this actually did occur in the not so distant past with a flood on on Fountain Creek. As we continue to grow, it's really important that we provide a redundant source for transmission. And so that second interconnection on the east side of Fountain would would provide for that redundancy and significant improvement in reliability of our system. The rate study indicates that the that rate increases of approximately four percent per year over a five year period may be necessary for us to have the financial resources that are needed for the identified system improvements. Our recommendation is to implement the first two steps while continuously reevaluating those system improvement needs. Well, as we work through things over the next couple of years, we'll be able to better define those needs and better define the costs associated with those system improvement needs. Although a rate increase is recommended, it should be noted that even with the proposed increase, the vast majority of our customers and ninety-five percent of our customers are residential. So our residential customers will still pay less with the increase. They'll pay less per kilowatt hour electricity than our neighboring utilities. And in fact, we will remain one of the lowest cost utilities in the state. There's a twenty twenty electric bill survey that's done by the Colorado area municipal utilities. And then also the federal energy information administration also does a report on electric sales. And in fact, in the EIA or the Energy Information Administration, in according to the twenty nineteen data, which is the most recent reported data, out of all retail electric utilities in the state of Colorado, we are the ninth lowest out of fifty-seven. And out of all of the municipals, we are the seventh lowest out of twenty-eight. So we we are a low cost provider. We're we're on track with a schedule that would result in the proposed rates being effective January first of twenty twenty-one if they're approved by the council. But as I previously stated, staff is prepared to take whatever time is necessary to ensure that an appropriate decision can be made in the best interests of our customers. Because that's that's our our sole purpose for for our existence is is providing service to our customers and doing what's in their best interest. For this evening, we'll hear a presentation by our rate consultant, John Krasky, which I'll pass the baton to in in just a moment. Following the presentation, staff, including myself, Carl Christian, our deputy director of utilities, and Brett Robinson, our customer service manager. And Mr. Krasky will be available to answer any questions that the council might have. As required by statute, then the council will hold a public hearing to receive comments and questions from the public. And then the staff and Mr. Krasky will respond to the published questions and comments at the appropriate time or as requested by the city council. So following the completion of the public hearing and discussion by the council, I will make a recommendation for the council's consideration. So that's kind of how we're going to step through this process this evening. So at this time, though, I will ask Mr. Krasky to go ahead and give us a presentation on his cost of service and rate design study.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dan. I hope everybody can hear me okay. It worked earlier. So, Mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here for your public hearing. This is a career first for me. This is the first time I've done one of these hearings, public hearings virtually. So congratulations. We can go to the next slide, please. This is an abbreviated form of the presentation I gave in September. We're regiving it since this is in in an introduction to the public hearing for any customers that want to make a comment just so they can hear the same presentation. But I'm going to go through it a little quicker than I did last time. So Dan already mentioned this. Last time you went through rate study was two thousand eighteen. A couple of things that were done in that, there's a three percent rate increase. And then there were increases in the system development charge and the line extension charge. Rate increase was directed really at all rate classes as we went through that. So next slide, please. So the purpose of my presentation, I I plan to review the electric rates. One of the goals of the rate study is to develop rates that reflect the cost of service and accomplish other goals established by the utility. As as Dan noted, you're a a public power utility, you're owned by the city. Your goal isn't to maximize shareholder value and return as much money as possible to your investors. Your goal is to set rates that reflect the cost of service and reflect not only for the the utility as a whole, but for individual rate classes. I will want to make sure that you collect enough money to pay the bills. You don't want to lose money, obviously. And and one of the things that we wanted to look at too was because we know that there's a long term capital improvement plan being put together. Any rate increases, we wanted to spread the initial increases over two years and develop an ordinance that would reflect that. The last goal is is somewhat secondary because you still have to collect enough money to pay the bills. But in in doing so, we want to try to establish rates that are competitive with your neighboring utilities. To the extent that the rates calculated from the study are not competitive, that may point you in the direction that maybe you need to decrease costs. But I don't believe that's the case. Your rates are going to continue to be competitive with your neighbors and with other utilities in Colorado, even with the proposed increases. The next slide, please. So there are here are the rate components of that the most utility that you are assessed to your customers. You have customer and delivery charges, and that's the portion of your revenue that's used to fund utility operations. That's that includes the lines through the run through town. It includes the one fifteen interconnection you have with the city of Fountain. Covers the cost of sending out your bills, covers the cost of the trucks and the folks that that run the trucks and the linemen that climb the poles. All those expenses are covered by the customer delivery charges. Also, future system improvements are charged or are recovered from this in the form of you you pay debt service typically on those improvements. You recently issued bonds for some of the initial improvements as part of this capital plan for the transmission system. It all gets funded from the customer delivery charge. The other component of your rates is what's called the energy charge and the energy cost adjustment clause. And you have third party charges that you paid to other folks. Excel Energy Contract, your Western Area Power Administration allocation, your Pueblo Hydro contract, and then this transmission you take Colorado Springs. Those costs are all passed through to your customers.
I'm getting a message that the people out online are not seeing any slides.
Okay, nothing has changed here.
Yeah, we're seeing the slides on from my position here as well. That might be a local issue possibly.
And they're also seeing the sounds kind of being intermittent too.
Okay.
It could possibly be an issue with their internet connection. We were getting multiple reports that folks were able to see it. So it'll be just a handful of people. It might be network issues outside of our control.
One of the comments is they just need to slide the slide to the right. I don't know what that means. Mr. Rick says he can see the slides. Ms. Cologne can see the sides. Slides, I'm sorry.
First time it's texting me saying I can see the guy that's talking, but I can't see the slides. So I don't know.
Just got a report from someone up in North Colorado Springs. They're seeing it okay. There are there might be some delay in in slide changes, but we are seeing the slides go up.
Okay, I think what might be an issue is, real quick, Sharon, underneath where John is his photo on mine, I have three little lines. And if that's far down, right underneath his tie, like it's right underneath his tie, don't move, John. There's these three little lines on a bar. If you pull that up, it 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 shows the slides. And it could be those are what's holding.
Okay, apparently this person fixed it with with your online tutoring, Mr. Mayor. It was fixed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. For those who couldn't see those, when he's done with the presentation, if one of those slides you want to see again, you can either type it in and I'll make sure we get those slides re re. We'll we'll put those slides back up so you can look at those. So we'll let him kind of finish out his thing. And then if we need any specific slides you missed that you really want to see, we'll we'll definitely put those back on. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. I think I was just finishing up with the energy charge and ECA. But so you have those components that are that are that are those costs are passed through to your customers on a one for one basis. Each month, the city staff takes a calculation, determines how much those elements actually cost. And then the following month adjusts the revenue collection so that those costs are passed through on to customers as they occur. So you don't and you don't make any money off of those charges. Those are again, they're straight pass through. You don't collect the margin on those. You just collect those based on the straight cost of service. Next slide, please. This is the division of how those costs relate. Forty-one percent of your costs are those internal costs that I talked about earlier. And then fifty-nine percent of your costs are related to the purchase of power and the interconnection with the Colorado Springs utilities. So that's actually a pretty good percentage. I've seen other utilities that it's more like fifty fifty. And this kind of a split indicates that you're you're running your internal system in a fairly efficient manner. Next slide, please. So I know Carl's talked to you all about the the proposed transmission improvements. I know Dan has talked to you all as well. This is the list of those particular improvements that are going into your system. I liken this your existing system that if you're a single, just one house, rather than, you know, putting a distribution system in place and connecting to that and putting a wire to your house. Right now, you basically have an extension cord running to your next door neighbor's house. For the utility the size of you are to have a single interconnection is, you know, it's I'm not going to say it's a threat to reliability, but it certainly isn't ideal. I think the plans that 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 your group has put together are going to improve reliability for customers. And I think in the long run, help enable growth and 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 I think it's, like I said, it's it's very important to make sure that you have that reliability. So that if you have an incident occur, you can quickly back it up from alternate supplies. Those costs are about fifty-five million dollars. And again, those are going to be funded through twenty twenty-five. This rate study is intended to recover the debt service associated with the initial improvements that occur over the next couple of years. Next slide, please. So the deficit in twenty-one is about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. By the time we get to twenty twenty-five, that deficit increases to about four point four million dollars. And that's almost entirely related to the debt service associated with the projects that I just spoke about. The four percent rate increase that I'm proposing today that staff has recommended to you all in the in the in the materials, that would be a four percent annual increase in twenty twenty-one and another four percent increase in twenty twenty-two. And and I will say, I think those are the first two steps of increases you need. I most certainly think that if you fund the full fifty-five million dollars, you're going to probably need additional increases, but we're only implementing the first two because we want to get a better sense of how those capital improvements look. What the, you know, what what kind of recovery you might get from area providers like Colorado Springs Utilities. But again, we'll we'll implement those first two increases to make sure that you can fund the initial debt issuances that you need. Next slide, please. The way that the rate increases have been directed, really, it's at all rate classes. The rate design, we're actually in pretty good shape in terms of each of the rate classes has been paying its fair share. So, you know, we don't have any rate classes that are significantly above or below the cost of service. So we're going to pass the first rate increase of four percent through pretty much to all customers on a fairly similar basis. Another issue that we're going to do is adjust the energy cost adjustment base. What ends up happening is that was set about seven years ago and you've actually seen a decrease in your energy costs since then. So what this will do is on the typical monthly bill over the course of a year, you'll see the energy rate increase, but you'll see the energy or what what's recovered from the energy rate will actually decrease. And you right now have been providing a credit to your customers and that credit will go away. The net of those two is to basically balance out. There is no impact to customers from that change. It just eliminates having a a large energy adjustment each month on their bill. So it ends up reducing the number of questions that folks have. They're saying, well, what's this thing and why is it so negative? Well, it essentially is because you're positive on that over the last few years. And we want to basically move those costs with normally an adjustment into just the regular energy charge. That's the best practice that most utilities try to do on a regular basis just to make sure that the bill is clean and you don't have these big adjustments each month. Next slide, please. So this slide here shows, this is out of my report with one minor change compared to the original report. This shows that the the rate class changes for each month, how it's distributed by rate class. I have one change that I've made in this slide is to adjust the the dollar per month residential. Rather than basing it on the average over the system, I'm basing on a seven hundred kilowatt hour customer. Those are the comparisons we use with the CAMU rate study, the Colorado Association of Municipal Utilities study. So I wanted to make sure it was on a common basis with that. So you can see that with the proposed change in twenty twenty-one, we have a three dollar and twenty-five cent per month typical bill increase. Any I I want to stop right now and ask if there's any questions from the council. This is kind of probably one of the major slides, I think, showing how the This is kind of probably one of the major slides, I think, showing how the rate change is implemented.
Okay, I'm not seeing any questions from council at this point.
Okay, very good, Mayor. We'll go to the next slide then. So again, three dollars and twenty five cents a month. And Dan mentioned this in his introductory remarks. We looked at the twenty twenty one typical bill and your your residential customer is actually going to be paying less. Seven hundred kilowatt hour customers paying less in twenty twenty one than they were in two thousand fourteen. I'm not aware of a lot of other products that I currently buy that I can say that about. I'm pleased that's that's the case. And you've made some good decisions with regard to your purchase power costs. That's the primary driver to that. You know, you recently executed the agreement with Guzman, where they provide you some credits over time. You know, that actually reduces your bill about seventy nine cents a month. So that three dollars and twenty five cent increase that we had, that would be over four dollars a month if we if you hadn't done the Guzman agreement. And again, your rates do compare very favorably with the Camu retail rate survey. The next couple of slides, I'm going to show you those, show you some impacts compared to neighboring utilities. But you will continue to be in the lowest five to ten of other of a utilities in the state of Nebraska, state of Colorado, excuse me, with regard to your rates. So through the next slide. So this is, these are the neighboring utilities that we typically compare your rates to. Again, you're, this is based on the twenty twenty Camu rate survey. The one change is that I've taken the Fountain rates and added this proposed rate increase into that. So this is actually your twenty twenty one rates compared to last twenty twenty rates. So as these other utilities experience rate increases, these numbers may adjust. But you can see that among your peer group, your local entities that you care about, that we've always compared your rates to. You are the second lowest in the in the area. Excel's rates are a little bit lower than yours for residential, about three and a half dollars a month. But, you know, they serve primarily Denver. That's their primary service territory. If you look about your immediate surrounding utilities, so you are very competitive. And you know, compared to like, for example, Black Hills, your rates are, you know, nearly forty dollars, more than forty dollars a month, lower than their particular rates. Next slide is the commercial comparison. And again, this is for a two thousand kilowatt hour customer using ten kilowatts. You can see you're slightly above Colorado Springs. But you're below the two REAs that are your in your immediate vicinity. And again, you're well below where the Black Hills rates are for the similar customer. So I I think, you know, given that we're looking to start funding a pretty significant capital project for you to be able to maintain rates that are competitive like this, I think that's a credit to the way you've managed the system as a council and the way your staff has managed the utility as well. Certainly Curtis Mitchell has done, did a great job while while he was managing the utility. And and I've seen a lot of great things from Dan and the staff that's on that's there now as they navigate through this rate change and the improvement program that's going forward. So the next slide, please. Last two things I want to discuss are the system development charge and the line extension fee. We're proposing an increase in the system development charge. And that's going to recover a portion of the cost of the new improvements that are going into place. That lot increase will go from that lot charge will go from a thousand forty three dollars to twelve hundred and fifty dollars. The line extension fee, we are proposing no change for that. That will remain at seven hundred and seventy seven dollars. Next slide, please. So again, the conclusions, I'm recommending a four percent rate increase. That's what the ordinance or the resolutions, the ordinance is based on recommending those increases remain should be directed at all your rate classes. In that the, even with these rate changes, your rates will continue to be competitive. So I think that's the conclusion of my slides. I'm open to any questions. Or if there aren't any questions for me, I'll turn it back over to Dan.
Okay, thank you. And so again, with the public, the way the public session is going to work, I'm going to have council ask any questions, pertinent questions as as we move forward. Once council has an opportunity to ask questions, I'll move it into public because we have quite a bit here tonight that are here for this subject. And then we'll answer questions from them. And then once we kind of, I think we've vetted as many public questions as we can. Or it's that's here, we will move back to council to kind of finish out. And then we'll make a decision from there based on where the discussion takes us. So, Mr. Blankenship, is there anything further that you need to talk about before we go into council questions first?
No, sir. Please proceed with any questions that the council may have.
Okay, and so I'm going to look to council and see if any lights or mics turn on. I don't know if 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 probably the might help with the discussion as well. Dan is, I guess, what's what's going to be the bottom line? There's a lot of numbers that were thrown out. We talk about different pieces and parts to the rate and and things that are affected by it and things that need to occur because of it, those types of things. What's what's the bottom line, average customer residential who who, you know, is dealing with everything that's going on right now? And then we're we're, you know, in a, you know, now asking to increase these rates. What would, if I can ask that, what's the bottom line?
Yeah, the bottom line is.
Give a specific.
Yeah, but ninety five percent of our customers are residential customers. So we can say with a lot of certainty that the majority of our customers will see about a three dollar and twenty five cent per month increase in their electric bill. And that's based on our, the average customer that's someone who uses about seven hundred kilowatt hours per month. So obviously, if you use more than that, you'll you'll see a little bit more increase. But it's essentially about four percent increase in our rate structure. So that that's the bottom.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Well, you actually covered the the first question I had. The second one was just kind of a clarification on the slide with the small commercial. The bar graph there, was that on the residential one, you said that the green line for Fountain was after including the rate increase? And then is that the, is that true also of the small commercial?
Yes, it is. Yes, for the same, yes, this is the same slide presented in the same format, showing the twenty twenty data for the other utilities and then showing yours with the increase that will occur that is planned for January of twenty twenty one.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I just wanted to be a hundred percent clear on that. Appreciate that.
Welcome.
Okay. No other counsel at this moment, so I'm going to go ahead and open it to public. I am going to go first, since I promised I would, and she's been waiting patiently to miss Cologne. You have your questions typed in. I can either read them or if you'd like to go ahead and ask your question, you may do that as well. Ask your question, you may do that as well.
You can go ahead and read what I typed.
Okay, let me pull it up. Okay, let me pull it up. Okay, why would the city council to even think of increasing our? The public is hurting financially. It should be a vote on by all the public by ballot. Covid is causing many financial problems and the council wants to increase more stress on each household. And that is wrong. Anything else on that, Ms. Cologne? I don't want to.
I just have lived out here in Cumberland Green. The we, my husband and I moved out of Colorado Springs and moved to Fountain for the quieter neighborhood, lower rates, lower mortgage, we thought, because of taxes. We were hit very hard when we signed the house, finding out that the city had changed the the codes or I'm I'm not too sure what the terminology is. But they turned our area into a metropolitan district, which caused our tax rates to, our property tax rates to go much higher than predicted. When we finally signed the title and got the keys to the house. And so it's been kind of one shock after another, living out here and finding out that the cost even to maintain a green yard, trees. I've noticed that a lot of neighbors in our neighborhood have stopped watering during the summer. The the water rates are are very high. And now electricity is wanting to go up. And it's it's, I'm just wondering why the city council is doing this. And like I said, we've been here as of November fourteen years and noticed everything go up, everything. And so I right now with Covid, everybody's hurting financially. People's hours have been cut. And this is to me a such a bad, the timing is just so wrong, number one. Number two, even if the timing was not wrong and then this virus did not hit, we should be voting on this. I mean, I understand people do not log on. I understand that people have lives and they're busy. And in this neighborhood, we've got young families with kids, so I'm sure their hands are full. But and they need, I think you need more output. I think the council needs to hear how everybody up and down the streets of our great community feel. And it's 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 a, it's been a trust issue with the water. And that has, everybody's been trying to deal with that. And now it's electricity. And I'm just like, you know, what is going on here, you know? I I just don't understand why we are not putting this out for public vote every two years, if that is needed, four years. But our city council needs to realize they are making decisions financially for people who just don't understand why decisions are made and causing rates to go up. And so maybe I should be more active. I think everybody up and down the street should be more active. I have spoken to people about being active and learning more about the city council. And I I I definitely wanting to encourage everybody to be here virtually and be part of the community other than driving up and down the streets.
Yes, thank you. A couple of points of clarification. The Cumberland Green has has been a metropolitan district since the developer developed the metropolitan districts. And so and so we as a community don't usually make metropolitan districts unless the developer starts it that way. Or if there's a neighborhood that decides, hey, we all founded together. We want to create a metropolitan district because we think we can pay for things better or differently that way without having to wait. So that that has been ever since a developer, they came in, said, when we develop this land, we want it to be a metropolitan district. That wasn't a city decision. That was a we, I guess, the only decision is, okay, fine, if you want to do that, that's great. Make sure you inform your your new coming residents of that as well, who live in your neighborhood. One of the issues we do find out with people who move into neighborhoods like Cumberland Green or neighborhoods that have HOAs that realtors will conveniently leave those things out of the conversation until after fact. And not all realtors do that, but there, we've had a lot of discussions with a lot of citizens who have have that had have happened to them. And so, you know, we didn't force any neighborhoods to do HOAs or or those types of things. It's just those are kind of just the way those those occur. So I apologize on that if that was told to you that it wasn't. But it's, as far as I know, it's my knowledge, Cumberland has always been a metropolitan district since its inception, all those years ago. A lot of information you gave us. Thank you for that. And you know, that's been our biggest struggle is public input and public participation. And, you know, we had a small group of people who were even pushing us to go this route of virtual. And I don't know that many of them have even been on since we've gone virtual. And so it's it's been nice that we've been able to allow people to at least try to maybe give them a different venue to to take part in this. Typically, when we do have these discussions with rates or, you know, other things that are coming up that are going to affect a lot of people, we simply don't get the people out to to have those conversations. And so it's it's good that you're you're seeing that as well and encouraging your neighbors to to take part in this. It's something we we we've tried a million different ways to try to get the public involved. And and oftentimes, the public is is fine with where they're at. And and it's just one of those things that they don't want to be involved with. And it's a struggle for us as well because we do, as an elected board by the citizens of the community, we are tasked at making these decisions. And that's, this is one of those things that we have to do. And unless we hear very strongly in one one way or the other, those decisions are made based on what we think are are the right decisions and the right choices at the time. And and there's a lot of work that goes into these. And when we make these decisions, especially with rates and things, we're paying those increased rates as well as council members. We don't, we don't get a pass on these. We don't, we don't pass these along to other people. If I if I vote to increase a water, a water rate or an electric rate or or anything like that, I'm I'm going to be paying those just as much as everybody else. And I think the difference is, and and this is again, just everybody, as you said, has busy, have busy lives. And and people, you know, choose how they want to spend their their free times. And and, you know, and and they just kind of deal with, for lack of a better term, the consequences of you know, not being fully participating citizens. And that's just kind of the nature of any city you go to. And so, you know, we we do take these things very seriously. It's not something that we just, hey, we want to raise rates for, you know, because we need to. There's obvious, there's oftentimes a very good reasons why we have to do it. And and as stated tonight and the discussions we've had in the past with this rate case coming out that we're discussing tonight, there's some pretty important decisions that that we've been working and building towards so that we can ensure viability for electric rate customers who both live in the city and outside of the city, as well as, you know, our redundancy, which we have virtually none. I mean, we we have a great electric department that that ensures when power goes out, we are going to have people out there working on to get it fixed as quickly as possible. And we've got some of the best response times in the state, if not the region, you know, to make sure that that if you go to turn that power on, it's working. And so a lot of the reasons why we have to go this route, if we go this route as a council, is is there's a lot of things that we need to ensure because as has been stated tonight and and a few of the last few meetings is the growth in this community, as well as outside this community, is just going to continue to explode. People love Colorado and they're coming to this area especially. Good or bad, that's just what's happening. And so I I understand your concerns in it. And during this time, it's just, but it's one of those things that, you know, these, these are problems that have been compounding prior to Covid, and these are things that we're going to have to take care of outside of Covid as well. And so there's, I don't think there's ever a good time for this. I know this is a, this is really one of those bad times. And and it's a decision that we don't take lightly. And I promise you that, that each and every one of us have been struggling with this. And staff has been struggling with this as well because it's just the the nature of what we're dealing with right now. So I do have a lot of other questions. I want to get to some of these other questions as well. And I'm just going to go in order. I kind of was watching the hands go up. So, Mr. Rick, your hand is up. And I may have to unmute you. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Mayor and the council members, I have had extensive discussions with Carl Christian concerning the need for this capital improvements that the Mr. Blankenship has requested. And based on the information he's given me, I definitely think we need the improvements that are being suggested. I've also talked to Mr. Blankenship extensively. He has agreed that we are going to get competitive bids on all these projects before we go forward and that he will not be asking for any bond money to be issued until we've got the lowest possible price that we can get for the projects that are needed to be done. He, I expressed to him the concern that we have with the water department that we, despite doubling our water rates over the last ten years or over the, over a ten year period, we've still got a lot of debt out there. And I want to make sure we try and avoid that if possible. And I, I want to make sure we try and avoid that if possible. Uh, and he's agreed with me. What I will say, Mr. Mayor, is I haven't seen a lot of advertising about the rate increase on our social media platforms and in the newspaper. Other than Karen Hill's article a couple of weeks ago, I haven't seen a lot of uh requests uh asking for comment um from the public concerning this rate increase. What I would ask, Mr. Mayor, is the council consider uh tabling this item for two weeks to a- and advertising on our platforms, giving the number of customer service that people can call in and ask questions and possibly giving a number or two of city council members uh to where people can call and give their opinion on the rate increases. Uh, and then come back in two weeks and, and then make your decision. Uh, if nobody gives you feedback, hey, you can fall back to uh what you did uh on the sign uh ordinance. I got no feedback going forward. Uh, but I think we need to give a little bit more time. In the past, we've always had big public meetings. We've invited people in, we've had pamphlets and handouts and stuff. And because of COVID, we haven't been able to do that. And I just feel we deserve, we owe it to the public to give them a little bit more time during this time uh to provide feedback. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you um for the feedback. I know they've gotten it out and I've seen it in a few different places. It's um, you know, and, and I, the, the first thing I always hear from someone who, who is taken by surprise, well, I didn't, I didn't know this was happening. And we, we do make very concerted efforts to get this information out to people. Uh, one required by law, we have to um get these things out um uh to make sure people are aware that it's happening. Um, we do try to hit as much as we can as far as social media and those types of things. Um, I could tell you, and I'm not a big fan of, is um uh Facebook and/or Instagram because it turns into a free for all and, and the information that, that should occur uh because of that is, is really limited because everyone instantly becomes a um expert on electric rates or whatever it is that we're talking about, even though they have really no idea what they're talking about. I'm just going to be brutally honest with that. Um, so um, you know, we have our website that, that is easily accessible, as accessible as Facebook is. Um, and it's more reliable because the truth and the facts are there and it's right there as, as plain as day. And if there's any, ever any issues, um, there's phone numbers and email contacts that people can get in contact with anybody there. Um, I simply just uh, uh, I, and I'm going to go back to my comments earlier in other meetings where I think Facebook is going to be the downfall of this country amongst other things that are going on. Um, but social media has really um turned people into um instant experts who, who will not tolerate another person's opinion. Um, I'm going to stand by that one and I'll take the heat on that one if, if people disagree with me on that. But uh, you could do that on Facebook because that's what happens all the time. Uh, so thank you for that, Mr. Rick. Um, we have had a little bit of a discussion, um, we meeting myself and Scott and, and just kind of deciding um if that's going to be part of that discussion night as well. Do we need to give it just maybe two more weeks? I don't know yet. Um, we'll see what the rest of the council feels on that. I do want to hear um other people's comments tonight. So I'm going to, um, I have another hand up and I don't want, I don't mean this disrespectfully. So I'm going to call you by your first name because I don't want to mess up your last name. So uh, Ms. Genevieve, um, I'm going to unmute you if you have a question. And your mic is green, so you can go ahead and speak. I don't know if it's not working. Okay, if um she did type in here, so I'm going to uh enlarge this so I can see it. It was doing it earlier for me. Okay, so Ms. Genevieve, if you, if your mic starts talking, go ahead and start speaking and I'll let you go from there. Um, for some reason, I'm just not hearing anything. Uh, but I'm going to read your statements that you have in here. Um, so everything, everything said it was raised three percent in two thousand nineteen and you were proposing to raise four percent for the next four years, but only voting on the next two. So then raising um twelve percent in four years and going to ask for more later. Um, so that's part one. Another question you raised, water, and they said it would increase only about five dollars. Mine increased drastically more, about one hundred to one hundred and fifty dollars more with water included. So does that not add up to the small amount? When I have not changed anything, I've lived here for eight years and this last year was the worst. Um, I'm going to have staff um speak to those numbers. I don't know if staff can see those. Mr. Blankenship, go ahead or Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I think probably uh Brett can probably address that uh that better than I can. We, we can't see the numbers, um, but maybe based on what you've read. Uh, Brett, can you maybe help the mayor out with the response, response there, please?
Sure. Yes, um, we have experienced a higher consumption on both water and electric due to more folks being home and utilizing more services. Um, and also the rate increase um was proposed beforehand. Uh, it was for a different capital improvement project. Whereas this time it's, it's for a secondary interconnection tie, which will increase reliability. We get a lot of complaints, not a lot, but we do have some complaints about uh interconnection and reliability. And this is primarily to fund that interconnection so that we have more reliability with our system. And I will say, I would have to review the case uh on a case by case basis. If anybody would like to reach out to the customer service department directly, we can review your account. We can review your consumption level of water and electric. And we can explicitly tell you e- exactly um how much you're paying based on your usage. Because it's hard to compare yourself to a neighbor uh when your usage trends are different. So we have to look at it and, and try to deduct how you're utilizing this service. And from there, we can make an educated decision a- and, and give you some, some, some detail on how that usage is being used and what it could potentially be going for. Um, during the summer months, uh, folks water their lawns more. So naturally, uh irrigation is the primary cause of higher water consumption levels. We've included that now on bills so that you could see twenty-four months worth of consumption so that you can compare, you know, this July to last July and see if you're in line. Because most folks don't believe that the usage has uh been this much this year. And then when you look back on the trend for the previous years, we showcase the gallons that have been consumed for those same uh months during the summer months. And uh, they're pretty similar, um, unless you have a leak. And that's another thing that we can look into is, is if you have a, a potential leak. Um, some of our newer meters show hourly interval data for twenty-four hours, meaning you should have at least a couple hours within a twenty-four hour period where you have zero consumption. If you don't, then you have continuous flow or something that is wide open and is leaking. And that's something else that we can investigate too, to see if you have a potential leak. And that's maybe attributed to why your uh water usage is, is higher. I hope that answers your question.
And Brett, if I, if I can, if you wouldn't mind giving that phone number to call customer service?
Three, two, two, twenty-ten.
And, and so we, we have a copy of the, the questions now. And so I think that's probably the best thing for this customer to, to do is to, to call that number and we can take a, a look at your specific account and, and walk you through that. Uh, yes, there was a three percent raise in twenty-nineteen. Uh, we're recommending a four percent in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. So uh, that's uh, uh, over that timeframe, uh, that's approximately a, a little more than eleven percent. Uh, when you add them all together, uh, water rates, uh, water rates are high. We, I recognize that. I, I, I also am a customer and I, I pay those myself. Uh, very uh sensitive, cognizant of that and very sensitive to that uh fact. Uh, and in fact, uh, we're, we're looking at ways where we can uh reduce costs so that uh we can offset potential future rate uh increases, especially uh in the water side. But for this customer, I would encourage you to call that phone number uh tomorrow and we will help you to understand exactly what your situation is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Uh, Genevieve, did, did you get it to work now?
Can you hear me now?
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, hi, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, yes, I was just going off of what the other gentleman said is on social media and stuff. I get it, but I didn't even know this meeting was virtual until I went down to your guys' to City Hall. And I, that's how I figured out. I just, there was nothing put on like, you know, a simple Facebook, hey, with this meeting because of COVID has changed from in-person, like the letter stated, to going virtual would have helped great, greatly. But it, you know, people don't know. I had five neighbors that never got the mailer sent to them. So I think that a lot of people don't, are not getting all the information or they're missing it. But I understand the increase and I've already talked, I don't have a water leak. I've called the, the customer service, they walked through. It's just been drastic. We've been here eight years and I've never had a water bill. And that's that we've had family through with the summer months have never had water and electric so high compared to this month. And I, I understand that increases do need to happen. I get that. But the way the first gentleman said is that three percent from two thousand nineteen, four percent the next two years. And he even additionally said basically in like four years, it needs to be increased by four percent each year. So if you would add all those four years plus the, through the year two thousand nineteen, your proposed increase is twenty percent. That is a drastic in, in five years. And that is where I'm concerned. I look at the whole overall, I understand with everything it needs to increase, but it has to be increases that people want, the people, we are the people. You guys are supposed to be speaking for the people. And I don't, I understand that people don't, are not active, but sometimes it just takes people to, to truly understand what's going on. And I know that you guys have tried and I've gone to city council. I've gone and it goes into city council, school board, all this, people don't show up. And so I do understand that increases need to happen, but I also understand you need to see where everybody's situation. And the overall of twenty percent in five years, that is a drastic increase. If, if the rates go as according to the first gentleman that started talking at the beginning, I forgot his name, but that first said the three percent. And then in additional, it would be the four percent in two, twenty-one, four percent twenty-two. And then he said for four years, so that would, total cost would be twenty percent increase in five years. And that's my concern is that's a big increase in five years.
Okay, and Mr. Blankenship, were you going to speak to that?
Yes, I can. Yeah, that's, that, the, the speaker is, is correct there. Um, we had the three percent in twenty-nineteen. We are recommending uh four and four in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. But if you do take a look at the study, uh, it actually has uh, it has identified the potential need for four, for four percent increases over a five-year period. Um, so that, that is accurate. However, uh, as staff, we feel like uh we need to uh only recommend the first two steps of that and give us an opportunity to start to work through some of these projects and then continuously reevaluate our needs. Um, we're in addition to uh just the rate increase, we're also looking at every possible way we can to reduce our costs. Um, and primarily the, the uh rate revenue that is generated from these proposed increases are for those system improvements, with the biggest one being that second interconnection, which is a huge reliability thing for, for our system. Uh, and, and our plan is, is that we would bond for these improvements uh as we needed to do them uh so that future rate payers, because we're anticipating that there will be uh growth uh in the community and so that future rate payers can, can uh contribute to uh paying for, for these improvements. But the, the caller, our customer is, she, she, she has a good understanding of, of what is on uh, is on the table.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Ms. Uh, Genevieve. Again, I, I don't mean to be disrespectful by calling your first name. I don't want to mess up your last name. Um, uh, and so, you know, I, I, again, I, I get the concerns and, and this is going to affect me too. And um something I'm not, uh, I'm not happy about. And, and when we were going through the water rate increases and it seemed like, I thought every year it was, we're not going to do this again. And here it comes again. And, and that's, you know, personally for me, and I'm, I'm going to speak for the rest of the council. This is probably the worst part of, of being a council member is having to do these things. Um, please, please understand that um, you know, again, we're not taking these lightly. And, and we try to, you know, and I think this council has been really good about forcing the issue on um what's truly needed and um how do we make this um palatable, if that's the right word to use. So um, I'm going to go to the next question. Oh, and then I did want to mention that, so the information did go out on this, on this meeting of, in all of our rate or all of our bills that, that got sent out that we were having these discussions. And so um, I know that's, that's probably the main way uh that, that we were getting that information out. So everyone should have gotten this information of the, if it's not in there, I don't, I can't, I can't explain that. Um, but uh, um, that did go out in every one of our um utility bills recently. I don't know when it was. I personally, I don't want to say this, but I don't usually look at it. My wife's the one that takes care of our, our utility bill and, and gets to make sure that's paid. So um, she's the one who, who takes care of that. Um, Dan, did you have something else?
Yeah, Mayor, uh, this, this notice went out uh as a i- independent mailer to all of our electric customers, both within and outside of the city. Uh, and this was uh mailed on September the twenty-third. Uh, by, by statute, we have a thirty-day obligation to notify our customers in advance of a, a rate hearing. Uh, and then we also published this notice uh in the Fountain Valley News. Uh, this, this particular uh one is the one that I received uh in, in my mailbox. Uh, but we did, we, that's, that's the notice in addition to what's been on our, our webpage.
Okay, thank you. Um, next, uh, Ms. Genevieve, okay, you're good. Um, so I have other questions here. Uh, let me pull this back up. It's just hard to read because it makes it really small. Um, okay, I'm, I'm just going through all that. I have a lot of questions tonight. Um, Ms. Jennings asked me, we have a list of the upgrades that will be taking place. Um, uh, Dan, I'm assuming the upgrades that we talked about in regards to um like the substation, those types of things. I'm assuming that's what Ms. Jennings is asking. Um, I would muted you, Ms. Jennings, if you'd like to speak to that. Um, or if I'm hitting the right thing, um, and we can get that onto the website, go ahead. Okay, her mic came on for a second and then it went off, so um.
Hi. Yes, we're just curious if there's an actual item, itemized list for these upgrades.
Yes, sir, there, there is. We have like uh, for the electric fund, we have a capital, five-year capital improvement program. Uh, initially, initially adopted budgeted in the following um five years. Uh, it lists all of the capital improvements, not only the ones that are being uh, that would be funded from these revenues, but everything that we're planning on doing. Uh, we have that information um and we can certainly uh make that available in whatever way would be convenient uh for the public to see it.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be absolutely wonderful, sir.
Okay, and I think what we can do, um, Dan, is get that put onto the website.
We'll do that.
And then we can uh, okay, well, so we'll get a link onto the front page of the website, our FountainColorado.org um and have that information available. I think he said tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Uh, give them a ch- okay, yeah, give them a chance to get it put together and get it to our department that puts that stuff on our, our website. Okay, um, next question. Um, Ms. Foster, um, how will the rate increase affect D eight with the eight being one of the largest commercial um users? Um, school districts have had substantial cutbacks, lots of funding over the four years and are not receiving the proper funding they should currently be in receiving. Well, they're obviously going to um have a big cut as well. Let me get back to. have a big cut as well. Let me get back to that there and unmute you. Uh, go ahead and, and answer to that about the school district and how that's affecting them, Mr. Blakenhip.
Uh, that would be a four percent increase, um, in, in each of the two fiscal years. So, uh, if they know approximately how much they're paying now, if they continue, uh, at the same rate of consumption, uh, that they would see a four percent increase in two thousand twenty one and then another four percent increase in two thousand twenty two.
Yeah. And just so people understand as well, the, the school district is our number one, um, customer, if I'm not mistaken. Um, as far as consumption and things like that. They have a lot of buildings and a lot of lights that they feel the need to turn on. I can tell you when I was teaching there, um, in our brand new shiny, uh, middle school, I kept the lights off. Um, because I had all these wonderful windows that let in, uh, beautiful natural light. So, um, I did my part. Um, but you could walk into other classrooms that worked, nobody was in them, but the lights were bright on. I don't understand that, but that's just the way that, that, that system worked there. Um, and so I think there are a lot of things that, uh, we can all do to, to help, um, alleviate that. Some people are willing to, others don't want to, and that's certainly your choice of, of how you, um, do things. And, um, it's a continuing battle in my house and one I do not have anywhere close to ever winning. Let's see, the next question, comment, not question, um, from Mr. Jennings. Um, I agree, I live off of Daff, Dillner Fountain for Carson Water expensive, but yeah. Um, you know, water did go up and, and we becoming a partner in Southern Delivery System really increased our rates so that we could, um, ensure that we had some form of redundancy as far as, um, using our water out of Pablo Reservoir. Um, and then of course, the, um, the contamination, which we did not create, uh, but was thrown in our lap and we had to deal with it to ensure that we're providing good clean water. While we got a lot of, a lot of, a lot of money, I'm gonna say that three times, a lot of money out of the, um, the air force to help pay for a lot of the infrastructure needed to treat that water. Um, there were still some costs that we had to, had to put into that and, and which further added to our increases, which, um, which, which is not good. And I can tell you, um, water is more valuable than gold in these parts. And, um, you know, the value of water goes up as just like everything else. And, and we're doing our best to keep those costs as, as low as possible, but at the same time, those, those, uh, um, those costs continue to go up and we need to, we need to be able to pay and, and have good clean water and, and the technology to clean. When we find new things like PFOWs that, that occur in our water, um, you know, how to, how to make sure we, we protect our citizens with that. Um, uh, let's see. Uh, again, sorry about, um, the issue with, um, City Hall. I thought that information got out that we moved to virtual. In enough time, it was one of those things that we just, we didn't have a, um, a whole lot of leeway on our side. And, and we didn't understand what the number, what they're telling us as far as numbers. So I do apologize. I'll, I'll apologize on that one because it's just, uh, um, it was, it was a huge uncertain thing and we've been trying hard to, um, uh, stay on top of it so that, uh, we don't, um, go back in, in levels of, um, quarantine, I guess is the best way to put that. Uh, Ms. Kircher, let me unmute you on my end, and you need to unmute yourself.
Uh, good evening.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, uh, public consultants, staff. Um, I wanted to say a few things. First of all, the lineman statue that was put up, I absolutely love it. It is one of the best things that's happened down here in a good long while. So thank you for that. Um, I heard, uh, the rates were gonna be four percent per year over five years, which is to me twenty percent. And that's compounded, the four percent compounded every year. So that's gonna be quite a bit more. And what I heard was in addition to the three percent in two thousand nineteen, I'd like to say on the redundant, um, trans, uh, transmission line. It's nice to have a redundant line, but if we don't have the money and people are down right now, I think we need to rely on fixing our problems. We have a full staff of linemen and trucks and everything else. Uh, the interconnectivity problem, um, I don't know if that's a big problem or not, but according to Brett, you said it was not that big of a problem. And then the other thing, we're competing with our neighbors and those guys are, um, using their coal-fired plants. But on, um, in eight, in May, we, uh, had a, a notification that the city is expected to save millions because of our partnership with Guzman Electric. And we're probably getting our electricity from them at around two cents instead of about five cents for the, uh, coal-fired electricity. Also, um, on the bills and the, um, my bill, I've got it right now on my bill, I've got a credit, um, ECA credit of about three dollars, uh, about seven dollars, plus the bill's going up three twenty-five. So that means a seven dollar increase for me. And right now my bill is already at seventy-eight forty-five and I'm using six hundred and sixty-three kilowatts. And then also, um, we're phasing out of, uh, gas-fired appliances. And when these bills are going up, 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 what's the incentive for people to remove their gas furnaces and their gas water heaters, which are totally killing the planet when our electricity rates are going so high? There's no incentive whatsoever to switch out of these deadly appliances that are, are bad for us and bad for our planet. And many of the people I've talked to are against, they know about the rate increase and they're against it. And, um, I think we should really, uh, dial back our spending. Right now, I, uh, people are, are not in good shape. If we're in good shape, yes, let's get all this great stuff. But we're not in good shape right now. So, um, I, I'd like to see it dial way back. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Um, thank you for your comments on that. Um, I could tell you, in my experience, and, uh, I'm not kind of, I, I hate being the bad guy here because I feel like I'm being the bad guy and, and, um, you know, doing the yeah, but statements, but, uh, uh, but the issue is, you know, the, I don't know that there's ever gonna be a good time. When, in, in good years, we still have, uh, people who are absolutely against it. And so, um, you know, these are, and, and I'm not saying this is any good year either. This is a right time, but, um, I don't under, I don't think a lot of people really understand, um, the, the danger, the substation is really key to, to our viability as a, a community provided electric, um, company. Um, if that's the right term to say, but, um, uh, it, it's not gonna take much for it to go down and take days to fix. Um, and so this is something that's, um, long overdue and have, uh, you know, because of, you know, water issues and, and, and PFOS and PFOs and things like that, it, it put that thing on delay even further. And so we're at a point now that, that we're kind of at a, at a make or break time here. And so, um, again, I, I appreciate everybody's concerns and, and comments as to, um, what's going on here tonight. And again, I do want everyone to realize and, and understand that we are taking this, um, quite seriously and, and it, I'm gonna re, kind of repeat this a bunch of times because, um, I think the notion is that, that council's doing this, um, just for the heck of it and we're not. And, and, uh, um, I think, uh, the electric department has done a lot in the last couple of years to really get us to a point that we could, um, and, and I may be speaking wrong here, but it's really to soften the blow of our rate increases by creating other partnerships and things with the other, uh, electric companies that we have and, and going for the best rates possible. Um, our, I can tell you, and, and I don't know if I, if this is right thing to do, but our, our neighbor in the north, we asked it to partner and they, they weren't the going rate. They were actually quite a bit higher than what we were able to get out of state. And so, you know, we went what's gonna be best for our community in the lower rate. So, um, you know, thank you for everybody who's, who's gotten on tonight and, and is, um, giving us, uh, a lot to think about and, and move on. I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Blakenhip, because his, uh, camera turned on. I want to give you an opportunity to speak to anything that I may have messed up. Number one, you need to fix it, which is quite okay. And I'm, I'm okay with that. Number two, um, uh, answer any further questions that need to be fixed as well, um, from public that has been asked that I didn't, uh, uh, fully commit to or, or answer. And then as you're doing that, I'm gonna go through the list of questions here to make sure I, uh, I didn't miss anybody.
Okay. And I believe it was Mrs. Kircher. Uh, did I get that?
Yes.
Name right? Uh, she was very, she's obviously done some research and is, is very informed. Uh, the only thing that, uh, I, I do want to say, uh, is the, that what she didn't know, uh, is what we're currently paying for wholesale, uh, electricity. Uh, and I think she referenced us, uh, two cents per kilowatt hour, uh, which, uh, I, I wish we were paying that. Um, but, uh, under our current contract with, uh, Public Service of, uh, Colorado, I work currently in two thousand twenty paying five point nine five cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, we will remain under contract with, uh, Public Service of Colorado, also known as XL Energy through two thousand twenty-seven. Uh, and the, and the rates continue to, to increase over six cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, and in the last couple of years of the, uh, contract, we'll be paying almost six point nine cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, we have entered into an agreement with Guzman Energy, uh, in, in which they're helping offset some of those costs over the first couple of years. And will continue to do so if they stay within the contract. Uh, but even when we start in two thousand eighteen, they're gonna be at five point three seven cents per kilowatt hour. So we will see a big drop, uh, when we leave XL from six point nine to five point, uh, seven. Uh, but those are the wholesale energy, uh, costs that we are, uh, paying. Plus, we have to have transmission service to bring that, uh, energy to, uh, to Fountain. So we're, we're paying a couple hundred thousand dollars a month, uh, to Carro Springs Utilities or maybe a hundred and fifty or less to Carro Springs Utilities, um, to, to bring that power, uh, to, to Fountain. So I, I appreciate Mrs. Kircher's, uh, comments, uh, especially about the lineman, uh, statue. Uh, that's, uh, something that's unique, uh, that this community has done and, and, uh, glad. I know a lot of people really appreciate our linemen who, uh, get out there in all types of weather to keep the power on. But I just wanted to clarify, uh, the amounts that we're actually paying for. Uh, and John, uh, John Krasky, uh, in his presentation, uh, he indicated that, you know, that's, that's a basically a pass-through. So whatever we pay for our power costs, we pass that through, um, to our customers and, and, uh, so you, you're seeing that, what, whatever we pay, but that is part of our, our rate structure. And, and what we're proposing is, is, uh, the increase to, to cover the, the cost of these, these capital improvement, system improvements. I, I am certainly, uh, um, sensitive to the fact that, uh, uh, these are, these are system improvements that are needed for us to, uh, continue to improve the liability. Um, but I also understand that, uh, you know, if, uh, times are, times are difficult. And so that's one thing that we looked at. And when we looked at, uh, what we're proposing, uh, compared to where we're at with other utilities. Uh, and so we, we feel that what we're proposing is, is reasonable, but we also are sensitive, uh, to, uh, to our customers. And that's, that's why we're here, uh, uh, this evening is, is to hear those, uh, those concerns and, and certainly take those concerns into consideration, uh, as a decision is, is being made. Because we are a public, we, we're truly a public-owned and operated, uh, utility. Our customers are our owners. As a customer of this system, you are an owner of this system. And, and so I think we probably take, uh, our, our customers and owners, um, opinions and thoughts much more seriously than if you were just a purely a customer of an investor-owned utility. So, um, that's, that's all I have at this point there.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Rick, your hand is still up. Did you have something further or are you good?
I'm good, sir. I apologize.
Okay, not a big deal. Um, so with that, uh, I don't see, there's, I mean, for some reason now it's not moving. What's going on? Sorry, guys. Uh, okay. Okay, uh, Ms. Cologne, uh, to kind of go off track here, the, the lineman statue is, um, on our new roundabout on Duckwood Avenue. Um, if you go up, uh, Highway eighty-five, eighty-seven, I say go up, I mean, go north, um, uh, from the, from the main city of Fountain and take that exit, uh, heading east up towards Mesa, there's a roundabout and it's right in the middle there. And that was all funded through, um, private donors and, and things like that. And, and, um, thanks to Carl and, and all the work that, uh, he, he worked with the artists that get that put up. So, uh, I'm gonna go back to council. Um, there's a lot to digest. Um, a lot of information that we got in regards to the rate study. I know we've been kind of m- mulling this over for, um, quite some time and, and the discussion we've had, um, in our council meetings and things like that. Um, I do want to open it back up to council. Um, if you have any further questions, comments, concerns, uh, so where we're going with this, um, you know, if anybody has heard anything via email or phone call, um, from other people, I can tell you, I certainly have not, um, aside from tonight. Um, but want to have that opportunity for council to, um, kind of be able to, uh, not kind of, I'm sorry for saying that. Uh, it's getting late, but be able to move forward. So, um, I'm gonna wait to see if there's lights on or I say lights, mics, I'm sorry. Um, Mayor Pro Tim, go ahead. Thank you for saving me.
I was, uh, I don't know if it was pleasantly surprised, but I was surprised that this has been one issue. I didn't get a single citizen contact over except at the mailbox. Uh, the little mailbox kiosk where a couple of my neighbors came up and asked, what is the rate increase gonna go for? And we talked about resiliency and both of these guys are, uh, military veterans and are currently civil servants. And one, and one of the big things in their mind is risk management. And by the time our conversation was over, uh, they told me they were fully in support of limited rate increases like we're trying to consider. Um, and they were in support of those because of the, the risk management involved in uh, increasing the redundancy and the resiliency. And part of our discussion came back to, um, you know, there, there's an old, uh, it's been previously identified that in part of our thinking process, we often have a, a confirmation bias where everything that happens, we find some way to make that confirm whatever our prevailing opinion is. And, and one of my neighbors said, well, you know, you guys are kind of in a, in a danged if you do and danged if you don't situation because of the confirmation bias where if you get the second substation put in and the rate increases are paying for that, and then you have some catastrophic failure in the original substation, we're never gonna know it because the second one is there. And regardless of which side of the fence you're on, because we don't know of the catastrophic, uh, uh, of a catastrophic failure, once there's a second substation. Um, if you're on the side of thinking it's not necessary, that gets confirmed for you because the lights never went off. And if you're on the side of believing it's necessary, if you have the information and you know about the, the, the catastrophic failure, um, then, then you, you also get confirmed. So it's, it's one of these things where, I mean, for the last couple of months, I've been going back and forth on, do I support this both as a customer and as a council member? Do I support the idea of a rate increase at this time? When I know people are hurting financially, we, we happen to be lucky in, in our house. Um, as a defense contractor on my side and as a teacher on my wife's side, we happen to be lucky that we were considered essential. Uh, and, and quite frankly, uh, we think, we, we thank God for that designation on both of our careers. But looking around and I've got some neighbors on fixed incomes and I've got some neighbors who did unfortunately lose their positions or had their hours cut. And, and then, you know, so, so on the one side, I'm sitting there struggling with, can I, can I put my neighbors through that? Um, when I know they're struggling, but then one of the other guys at the, at the mailbox kiosk, he brought up the idea that, well, let's suppose we are in the new normal and the new normal is everything's done at home for an awful lot of people. And that's just putting increasing demand on an aging subsystem that needs to be reinforced. And he said, you know, the last thing somebody needs when they're already struggling to pay the bills is to have the lights go off for weeks at a time. And if we do have a catastrophic failure in that subsystem, it's not gonna be a matter of days or hours like we're used to. It's gonna be weeks before that thing gets recovered because most of those parts are not just sitting around in a warehouse somewhere waiting to be swapped in. If there's a, if there's a failure, an, an awful lot of the critical parts have to be manufactured to purpose, uh, is my understanding. Dan can correct me or Brett can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But it's my understanding, an awful lot of those parts are made to purpose. So when I go back and forth on both sides of the issue, I really understand the need to invest. I get it that it's difficult for an awful lot of people right now. But I also get it that we've done a ton of work to kind of minimize the impact or the amount of increase that we're going to be considering. So it's, you know, I'm not trying to sway opinion on a specific vote right now. So just saying that, I'm kind of seeing both sides of this thing. And that's kind of one of my problems all along, is I see sometimes more than both sides of the issue. And just kind of struggle with that thing. So anybody who thinks we're taking it lightly, as the mayor has said, definitely not, since we're paying the rates too. But we also do look around at our neighbors and know their situations and understand even a small, what appears to be a small rate increase could be kind of a big deal to an awful lot of our neighbors. So please understand by the time we do take a vote, whether that's now or two weeks from now, or whatever the case, we will have looked at this thing from about 16 different perspectives, trying to figure out the best way to move forward. So sorry for kind of a long ramble there. Hopefully there was a point or two in there, and if not, I apologize.
No, there were, and I think it's important to note that, you know, I, everything you said is valid. I, growing up in this town, I know what we're made of here and what the type of people that we have. And they're very hardworking, you know, people that put a lot of stock and pride in what they do. And, you know, when they bring home that money to support their families and their lifestyles, things like this that it affects you. And it may be small, like you said, to some. It may be large to others. And it's just, it's one of those things that, like I said earlier, probably at the beginning of this, I hate, as, that's one of the jobs I hate about being a mayor and/or council member of having to do these things like this. And, but again, we have to look at the big picture. And we are forced with, not forced with, but tasked with looking at, where has our past taken us? What are the mistakes that have been made, either intentionally inadvertently, however that is? What can we do to prevent those from happening in the future? And what does our future look like? What does the growth look like? What does, you know, the current state of affairs in our country? And, you know, in a week, who knows what our conversation is going to look like? There's a lot of speculation as to what's going to happen in a week from tonight, right around at this hour. So, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty in our world. And to top it off with the pandemic and seeing, you know, that we're thought of possibly having to go back and quarantine again. And I don't know that for sure, so please don't take that as that's what's happening. I'm just watching the news and hearing the governor. And I know the county's working hard to prove to the governor and the state that we're doing our part. But you never know, things change on us at a dime or on a dime. And we had to make those decisions quickly to move forward. This one hasn't been one of those decisions that we've taken lightly or on a dime. It's something that we are ensuring that we're making it. And however it's made, we need to be comfortable in the fact that we did it in the best interest of everyone involved, even though it may hurt a lot. So with that, council, any more opportunity for questions that you may have? Ms. Thompson, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, one comment about people that said they didn't get the notice. If you're a renter and your landlord is paying your utilities, so the bill goes to your landlord, you probably didn't get the letter because it probably, it would have gone to the person who pays the bill. So, you know, you don't want to delve into people's private businesses, but, you know, whether they're a renter or a homeowner. But that could be one reason why they didn't get it. I appreciate all the comments Greg said. And I just remember when I first got on council, there was a very large power outage, probably about half the city, for several hours on a night when the temperature was sub-freezing. And our house got really, really cold over here before that power. And then, of course, once power comes back on, it takes a long time for your house to warm back up. And I just think we need to be prepared for when things like that happen with the redundancy. If our power did go out for several days to get it repaired, we would lose a lot more money and food that's in our freezer and our refrigerators and all that food that we would have to be repurchasing. And it could be dangerous for different citizens that need electricity on all the time with different medical things that they need, you know, ventilators or different things that they need on, you know, and can't go without long periods of time on. So I have watched, even before I was on council, I came to a lot of council meetings. And all councils, I haven't seen any council that hasn't struggled with a rate increase. They all have, none of them have enjoyed it. And there's, and every single time there are people that's a struggle for, if you're on a social security income, it seems like you get $10 increase in the year and three or four of it goes to utilities. I think a lot of us understand that. But I think the redundancy is something we really, really need to look to and not, you know, not be kicking that can down the road any longer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Geek.
Yeah, I think we've got a fiduciary responsibility to the, all the citizens, not just a few. And to be real honest with you, when it comes to electricity, I live in one of those, I live in Fountain, but I'm paying quite a bit more than the people in Fountain are paying. And I live, as my wife keeps that utility bill down as much as she can. So I know that it's a struggle for everyone. I'm on a fixed income like everybody else. To me, we got to make sure that we're taken care of. And if you look back about a year ago or a year and a half ago when we had the storm, Fountain got their electricity back a long time before I did. And that, to me, is important that you can rely on. If we don't have an extra or another line coming in, to me, that's just the wrong thing to do. Well, there's no way that we can continue doing this. And if we're going to talk about any kind of growth at all, that's not going to make it any easier. So, and we're expecting the people to, that are the builders and things that are coming in here, we're expecting them to make sure that they're paying their share. Well, I think we have to take care of our share too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Couple more seconds on that for council. We are still in the public hearing. Okay, so with that, I'm going to close our public hearing. My little gavel there, close of public hearing. And unless there's further discussion, what would we like to do with the item? There's a few options that we can tackle tonight, or we can just go ahead and make a vote. So I'm going to kind of leave it open for discussion with council. And we'll just kind of go where that discussion takes us. Mr. Applegate.
Yeah, I'm ready to make a motion if that's not objectionable.
Okay.
Anybody objecting? Want to say something different?
I'm not seeing anything. Nope, go ahead.
All right. I move to approve Resolution 20-085 to adjust the electric rate as recommended and approve decision and order 1-2020E.
Okay, Mr. Geek.
I second that.
Okay. Ms. Huffman, we have a motion and second.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
And I just want to kind of close this discussion out because it was a good lively discussion. One, we, you know, and I'll be brutally honest, I talked about it earlier. We don't usually get a lot of public to talk about these things. And maybe because of our virtuality, if that's the right word, we had people who were able to get on and actually have that discussion with us. And so, believe me, we've asked a lot of these same questions as well, and, you know, from the beginning. And even when it's kind of just, hey, this may be coming up in the future, those questions start getting asked by us pretty quickly. Because we don't, we don't want to get to this point. Obviously, we did get to this point, but it nonetheless doesn't make it any easier. But we are asking those tough questions and we're pushing those buttons to really push our staff to make sure that they're doing those right decisions. And you know what they are as well? Many of our staff are residents. I know there's a criticism in the public that feels like all of our staff live out of town. And if you live out of town for some reason, you don't make good decisions about your own job and your livelihood. But, you know, people do take this stuff seriously and work really hard for all the ratepayers. And these things, they suck, but we have to do it. So, Mr. Geek, your mic's on, did you have something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something. We still take care, I mean, there is available for people that are having trouble with this. If this increase causes problems for them, we do have a way to help them, right?
Yes, it used to be through Reach, and now that Reach is gone, I don't know how we, who are we using for that? Mr. Blakenship, go ahead.
Salvation Army is the one who administers our Light in the Load program. And also during COVID, there's state assistance that is also available. And once again, you can get information about that on our website or by calling our customer service department.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, I do want to also mention the discussion that came up around social media, our website and those types of things. It's been a decision of mine as someone who kind of has been in the middle of everything to ensure that when we get our information out, we're going to get it out as quickly as we can with as most facts and evidence that we're putting out, whether it's, you know, a meeting coming up and those types of things. Occasionally, we'll have a miss and we apologize for that and we'll work hard to fix it. We pay a lot of money for our website and website design and the hosting of our website and those types of things. And for me, the control and ability to make sure we get any of that information onto that website is the most important. And so, you know, I really strongly encourage all citizens to utilize that website to get the information you need about what is happening within the City of Fountain. I do not want to rely on the likes of Facebook or Instagram or Twitter, any of those things. Those venues have turned into free-for-alls where so much information gets thrown into something that was merely meant for informational purposes. And I've seen this happen across the board, not just with City of Fountain things. Across the board, someone will put information out there. And so much misinformation is thrown about because everyone, again, becomes an instant expert without verifying your own facts and information. So I strongly encourage you, one of the, someone said, well, Facebook is so readily available. So is our website. If you have a tab open in Facebook, you can open a tab right next to that one, type in fountaincolor.org and get the information straight from the horse's mouth, right there. And there's no arguing and bickering about it. If you have questions, all of the council members' emails and phone numbers are there. You can get with staff and ask them questions. They will put their information there as well. So hopefully, if you're watching this later on, and I rub you the wrong way, that's just the way it's going to be at this point in time. If the next council wants to change that and do something differently with that, they're more than welcome. But in this age of misinformation, I want to make sure that we're doing the right by the, we're doing right by the citizens and ensuring that the right information is out there. And you're going to get the most factual information. And if there's anything that we miss or we need to fix, we're going to do that and we're going to apologize for it and we're going to move on. So please understand that. I'm going to move on to item number 10, correspondence, comments, and ex officio reports. I'm going to go ahead and start, I'm going to try to remember our list of staff. And I looked down the list earlier, make sure I have everybody. So if I missed anyone, please speak up after Ms. Sylvia. So Scott, I'm going to let you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, in the interest of time, just had one item I wanted to mention. And just to remind people that this Friday night, we have our Fountain Friday night. That's our Halloween drive-through event. And so there's just a reminder that that's a drive-through event for families. There won't be any sort of activities outside of the vehicles, just in the interest of trying to keep people safe and being cautious. But it'll be an opportunity for kids to come, get some Halloween candy and maybe see some fun little Halloween displays. So I just wanted to share that with everybody.
Okay, thank you. And there is ongoing discussion for public that, just in case, who knows what the governor's going to do between now and then? There's always that possibility. We're trying to avoid it as much as possible. So if you come around and are a part of that, you're a family that's driving by, really the intent is to keep your windows rolled up, you guys are contained. We're out where we are. We're going to have music playing on the station you can tune your car into and listen to Halloween music. Really, it shouldn't be more than five, 10, 15 minutes at the very most. It's just a quick drive around and people will be out there to kind of celebrate Halloween. I know for some kids, this may be the only Halloween they get. So we want to at least try to do our part. Todd?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of just quick major project updates. We were doing great on Link Road. We were right with our schedule to open at the end of this week. And then, of course, we had our Colorado weather hit us. So that is going to delay us. We did get the first mat of pavement down on Link Road. And the surface of the intersection of Squirrel Creek and Link is completed. But we won't be able to lay that second mat until the temperatures rise and allow us to do that. So we won't be able to get it open until next week. So the weather's delayed us those about a days going into next week. You will see north-south traffic open up at that point on Link. The only thing that will be closed is west on Squirrel Creek. And that'll be the final portion that'll be paved and resurfaced. So we're excited to get that done. Also, next week, you will see some disruption that started a few weeks ago along CNS at Fountain Mesa. That is a continuing electric project under the same similar projects you were talking about tonight. So you will see some disruption at CNS and Fountain Mesa next week. And that's all I've got there.
Okay, thank you. And again, I know there's been a lot of criticism of the timing and school and all that. And again, I think people need to realize that we had a lot of things planned earlier in the summer. But because of COVID, a lot of companies were forced to shut down. A lot of companies chose to shut down and wait things out. And so that really pushed our timelines as well. And so Bob and crew have been working tirelessly over the last few weeks to get those projects done before those asphalt plants close. So, you know, I know everyone wants to complain about everything, but please know that we work really hard to lessen that blow and we had to take advantage of things when they occurred. If anything, 2020 is teaching us how to be adverse, not adverse, where it teaches us to overcome adversity. And if we can't, then we can just blame it on COVID. Troy, anything tonight?
Nothing for me tonight. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, great. Mr. Blakenship, I know you got quite the podium tonight. I'm going to give you an opportunity to speak on anything that...
Thank you, thank you, sir. I just wanted to thank all of our customers who came out or visited with us this evening. We, you know, our approach here is that we're always, we are always going to do what's in the best interest of our collective customers. And we will continue to do that. And if there is anyone who has any questions or concerns about anything utility-wise for the City of Fountain, I would encourage them to please call me personally. My office number is 322-2040. And as your utility director, I am always here to visit with you and answer your concerns and questions. And thank you for the, to the council for the support in our recommendation this evening.
Okay, thank you. Just a real quick comment on that. I'm on a roll tonight, I'm sorry. I think citizens need to understand that that's not something that's common for a utility director to put themselves out there like that. I can guarantee you, our utility provider to the north would never do that with hundreds of thousands of people wanting to call him every single day. He'd never get off the phone. And really, honestly, the, that's just a hard thing to ask of somebody. So it's a unique thing that we have here and we're able to embrace that. And we're going to continue that for as long as we can. So I thank you for for offering that to our community.
You bet. You bet. Thank you. Good night.
Yep. Take care. John Lewis, anything further tonight? Are you still on?
Yes, just real quickly, thank you, Mayor. And I apologize, we did not get this on the consent agenda, but we need your approval for the budget workshop agenda on November 2nd at 6:00 PM. Right now, it's scheduled for Fountain Police Department upstairs meeting room at two 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 North Centipede Avenue in Fountain. But tomorrow morning, we're going to know if we can actually move it back to Council Chambers, which works a little better on 116 South Main Street. So just need council's approval of that public meeting.
Okay, so you need an approval of hosting a public meeting on Monday? Isn't that what the date is?
Yeah.
Okay, Monday, the second, so.
If it had been on the consent agenda, it would have been approved with that.
Okay, and are we okay with timeframes, Ms. Huffman, Mr. Johnson? Are we okay with timeframes?
Yes, sir. There's plenty of time to post this publicly.
Okay, thank you. So with that, council, the ask is we need to approve our public hearing on the second part of our agenda. So that would include utilities and all those other funds that really don't take up a lot of time because they're pretty small. But we do need to go over those. Ms. Thompson?
I'd like to make a motion for that, for the budget meeting, November 2nd at 6:00 PM. Location to be announced.
Okay, and the location will either be the Fountain Police Department upstairs or it'll be City Hall, Council Chambers. Hopefully, that will get announced, he said, tomorrow. Ms. Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of holding our public meeting and it will be noticed quickly. Ms. Huffman, please do the call.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. That's good. We'll move on with that. Ms. Godwin, anything from IT?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Trilch?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I just wanted to provide a little bit more information regarding the website that you mentioned, Mayor, and and the information that we have on there regarding council meetings and other important things like this electric rate issue question. On the top of the website, usually the Friday prior to a public meeting, we'll have a big banner right at the top of the website that will give information about the meeting and how to get access to it, whether it's virtual or hybrid. We also have it posted on the main page of the website on the master calendar. Additionally, at the top of the website, we have two portlets, one that has contact us information with a variety of ways that citizens can reach out and contact city staff. And to the right of that portlet is information about city council. And one click in to that will give a citizen access to all the city council members' contact information if they want to reach out to one of their council members. Regarding this electric rate increase, the notice for this discussion was posted on September 25th on the utilities webpage. The utilities webpage is the most visited page on our website every month. This last two months, from September 1st through today, there was 8,814 visitors to the utilities webpage. Of those 8,814 visitors, 22 people clicked on the notice about the electric rate increase. So just a little bit more information about what visitors were doing when they came to the website and to that utilities page. Overall, on our website, we usually average between 24,000 to 26,000 visits a month to our entire website. There was a question earlier in the beginning by Councilmember Thompson about the city council meetings. I went in and took a look at our YouTube site where we host all of the recordings for the meetings. Since April, since we've been doing these virtually in COVID since April, we've averaged about 25 views of the city council meetings. The one exception to that was the October 13th council meeting where there was 163 views. They the viewers don't, in no case did they stay on for the entire meeting. They generally come in and stay in for a couple of minutes and then drop off. So just wanted to provide that additional information about what we're seeing and what is available on what we consider the, you know, the cornerstone or foundational digital presence for the city, which is the website. Any questions, Mayor? That's all I have.
Okay, thank you for that information. That's interesting to know that one meeting had that many views. And I can tell you, I don't get on to watch them because I I don't even like to watch me on this. So thanks, John, for that information. Okay, I think that's it from staff. Ms. Huffman, anything from your part of the world that we need to know about?
Just wanted to let city council and citizens know that we were anticipating having really quick ribbon cutting at our new play area in Fountain Mesa Park. We did want to schedule it for the first week in November, but like Todd's concerns, we have Colorado weather. So now it will be pushed back to the second week in November, and I will let public and council and staff know when that's planned.
Okay. All right. Thank you for keeping us in order on that. I think that's it as far as staff. I'm going to go through council one more time to if there are any information, let me get back to my list. I don't forget anybody. Ms. Duncan?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Geek?
Nothing from me.
All right, Mr. Applegate?
Nothing more from me.
Ms. Estes?
Nothing more from me.
Mayor Protil?
Nothing more from me, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Just like to remind people, Veterans Day is going to be virtual again. So look for that on November 11th to be on the city Facebook and webpage. And feel free to stop by the park, of course, with your family in a small gathering to honor the veterans in our community. Also, on this Back to the City webpage, I we completely understand, I believe, as a council, people's concerns about the rate increase. Not only can you ask to use Light in the Load if you have that need, the citizens, that is a completely fund driven initiation. So you can sign up to donate to help your neighbors in need. Any dollar amount helps. There's a link on there to download the donation form or to give them a call for how to set that up. And it says every dollar of your donation will go towards helping fellow community members. So it is your opportunity that if you do have a little extra money, you can donate a couple of dollars, $5, $10 a month, or whatever you feel you can afford to help keep that fund moving forward.
Okay, thank you for that. I think I have spoke way too much tonight. So we are done with that part of the meeting. We do have our next meeting November 10th. Our next regular council meeting is November 10th. It will be at City Hall. Ms. Huffman, I should have asked this earlier. Is anything changed for our meetings in November because of Thanksgiving?
Yes, sir, actually, and I believe it was brought at a council meeting that I didn't attend. If it wasn't, I'll ensure that it is at our next council meeting to bump up both the meetings in November as we typically do. Our meetings in November would typically be the 10th and the 24th. And because of the holiday, we bump up the second meeting to the 17th. So our meetings will be held on the 10th and the 17th. Same with December. We'll have a meeting on the 8th and the 15th rather than the 8th and the 22nd.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And just kind of give everyone a heads up too. I know that that does come up in discussion, but I want to make sure everyone is aware of that as we get closer to those two dates. So with that, unless you show up to our public meeting on Monday for the second part of our budget, we will see you on November 10th, 2020. You all take care and have a great evening.